...for bringing the situation to light. Obviously, I was saddened and shocked after reading this report, but I'm glad, I'm very glad to see there's a plan in place and the appropriate action will be taken. Unfortunately, some people have been allowed to slip through the cracks, but the reality is, folks, the reality is, is I inherited a complete mess at Toronto Community Housing. I want to thank the councillors that sit on the board, Councillor Adju Mary, Councillor Platio, Councillor Bailau, and Madam Chair, Councillor Nunziata. There's no secret, I have a special place in my heart for people that live in Toronto Community Housing, I'm sure like all of us do. I've visited thousands of units for the last 13 years. I take comfort knowing that Mr. Jones is here, and one year he has proven that you can turn things around, and he's not coming back and always saying, "I need more money, I need more money." He has not once came into my office and said, "I need more money." He said, "We have to find efficiencies, and that's exactly what we're going to do," and he has done that. You look at what the auditor said in 2011. It was absolutely appalling what these people were doing at Toronto Community Housing, while the most vulnerable people couldn't get anything fixed. And I want to remind you, why did I get rid of the board? I'll tell you why. When you're spending over $100,000 on Christmas parties, two Christmas parties, $2,000 meeting at a spa, three-course meals, $6,000 on a Muskoka retreat, $3,000 on resorts and getaways, $2,000 on boat cruises, thousands and thousands of dollars, we don't know, for birthday parties, there was no receipts, $1,000 for chocolates, $1,000 for gift cards, $5,000 dinners at high-end restaurants, hospitality, luxurious golf courses, and $800 or more for massages. What sort of massages? We don't know. As you know, in 2011, the Auditor General reported on procurement practices. Let me tell you how we saved $10 million. I want to thank again Mr. Jones for leading the charge and Bud Purvis. Procurement practices, purchasing together, $5.5 million. They didn't even know how many cars they had at Toronto Community Housing. They didn't even know how many vehicles they had. They put it with our fleet services, $2.6 million. Holding the employees accountable for every single dime they spent, another million dollars. That's true accountability, that's true leadership. That's what I want to thank again, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Purvis, and the hard-working councillors, for taking the bull by the horns and getting to the bottom of it. If you want to compare this administration against a previous one about numbers and evictions, amazing. These numbers are amazing. In 2007, 323 people got evicted. I wonder who was mayor then? 2008, 514 people got evicted. I wonder who was mayor then? 2009, 427 people got evicted. All of a sudden, 2011, we go to 514 to 198, cut it in half. I know who was mayor in 2011 who cut those numbers in half? I am. I was. Talk about seniors, oh, 2008, 32, 32 seniors were evicted. In '11, 13, a third. Obviously, my administration is doing the right thing, and previous administrations were doing the wrong thing. And again, I want to thank Eugene Jones for his phenomenal leadership.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, your time's up. We do have questions. Councillor Perks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take it you've read the Ombudsman's report, so you'll be familiar with, say, for example, her statement number 308, that in the fall of 2011, the pendulum began to swing in the other direction, and there was a new focus on the collection of arrears. So are you at all concerned that during your administration, there was a new focus on collecting arrears, and that from the Ombudsman's report, this has led to the eviction and death of seniors in Toronto?
No, that is not true.
So the Ombudsman's report is not correct?
People are not going to live free at Toronto Community Housing. Councillor Perks, I think you can agree that you have to be there to see the improvements that have been made under the new leadership of Mr. Jones. I have seen it firsthand.
Who's that?
So if you think people are going to live for free at Toronto Community Housing, no, they're not going to live for free.
Thank you, it's helpful to understand that that's your...
I don't care if you're 2 years old, 20 years old, or 200 years old, you're not going to live for free.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By saying that you've now answered my question, I understand your attitude. On my next question, you make a point of pride, and in fact, on the 31st of May, you held a press conference, and during that press conference, you talked about how you visit all these buildings, how TCHC is close to your heart, and you return all the calls. How many seniors have called you saying, "I'm about to be evicted," and how many of them have you saved their unit for?
Not one person has called me a senior and said that they're going to get evicted.
Okay, given that not one person has called you and said...
Thousands have called me saying they need help.
I appreciate that.
They need their places fixed.
I appreciate that.
Unfortunately, lots in your ward too, so I'm not quite sure what the local councillor's doing, but I travel all over the city, and I shouldn't have to do that. As the local councillor, you should be taking care of that.
I agree with you, you shouldn't be doing that. Given that none of the seniors who've been evicted and are describing this report phoned you, do you think it's actually the correct management style that we rely on the chief executive to get a personal phone call in order to provide service, or do you think we should actually implement structural changes to stop seniors from being evicted?
Well, as far as I know, no seniors have called me saying they're being evicted. If there is a problem, I'm sure, I'm sure, councillor, if I could answer the question...
Councillor Perks, don't interrupt, allow the answer.
Yep. I'm sure that Toronto Community Housing sends notices, okay? I'm sure they call these people, I'm sure they go knocking on their door. So if you can't get a hold of somebody, how... And they owe thousands and thousands of dollars, regardless if they're seniors or not. Let's go back to the David Miller era, these numbers again.
Well, I'm curious...
Hold on!
They owe thousands and thousands of dollars.
I know it's sensitive, I know it's sensitive.
Thousands and thousands of dollars, then what?
I know it's sensitive, I know it's sensitive. You're the same person, you're the same person that condoned all this...
Mayor Ford, okay, okay, that's it. Okay, okay, we'll go to the next one. Councillor Vaughn, question.
Do you support the findings in this report wholeheartedly?
I can't say I agree with everything, but I thank her for bringing it to light.
What do you disagree with?
Well, there's many things, because you can't just say people are getting evicted and saying it's worse in this administration than it was in the previous. It's not true. I have the facts here that more people were evicted under David Miller's regime than under Rob Ford's. That's a fact.
Councillor McConnell, keep it down.
That's a fact. Okay, that's a fact.
Councillor McConnell. Honestly.
Do you support, do you support using language...
Yes, he's getting the information. Councillor Carroll, please keep it down, we don't need to hear from you. Yes.
When a tenant speaks a different language, Vietnamese, Portuguese, Farsi...
Just a sec, Councillor Vaughn is asking his question, Councillor Dusset.
I have just been told to keep my mouth shut by another councillor. I take offence to that.
Oh, okay, well, well, thank you. Okay, continue, Councillor Vaughn. Well, I don't know who said, "Councillor Dusset."
Or told me to keep my mouth shut.
Well, you shouldn't be heckling when people are asking questions.
I am stating a fact that what you...
The reason I asked the councillor to keep her mouth shut, same with the other councillors, you get up here, you try to speak, and it's always one side, the left side of this council attacks you constantly.
Okay, Councillor Ford.
Constantly. We don't do the same to them, so why... It's the same characters, the rules will change.
Okay, Councillor Ford. Okay, Councillor Ford. Well, Councillor Dusset, Councillor Dusset, it wasn't said publicly through the mic, because Councillor Vaughn yesterday insulted me, and he did not apologise, because he did not say it during the public session, so sorry, Councillor Dusset. Okay, Councillor Vaughn, question to Mayor Ford.
This started...
Your time was stopped, your time was stopped.
I watched, and I lost 40 seconds.
No, stop, no, stop. I stopped your time. I stopped your time.
When a senior, when your senior resident speaks Farsi, or Portuguese, or Mandarin, do you support the motion in front of us that communication with Toronto Community Housing should be language-specific to the requirements of...
Anytime I've had a problem with Toronto Community Housing, I've asked representation to go, and we need interpreter, interpreter's always been there.
No, no, I'm not asking after the problem, I'm asking in advance of the problem, so we're communicating...
In the advance of a problem, if someone calls me, Councillor...
You support it, yes or no?
Councillor Vaughn, I'm going to answer your question. Every time I've been called about going out Toronto Community Housing, and there's a different language spoken, I ask for an interpreter, every time, every single time, interpreter's been there to convey the message, and I'm there to help them out with the help of Toronto Community Housing and an interpreter.
But would you support...
And in his word, all over, I've been, everywhere.
Would you support changing the way we communicate with residents when we notify them of rent arrears or possible eviction, that we do so in the language of their choice? Would you support that?
At what cost?
Would you support it?
At what cost? No, I'm not going to blindly write a cheque when everything that...
So you get an interpreter, but the tenants don't...
No, no, I'm not going to blindly write a cheque.
Okay, I've got your answer.
So you can go and hire more friends and say, "Here, you know, here's a job at Toronto Community Housing." No, I'm not going to support hiring more people, we don't need more people, there's enough money there.
There is a surplus, I've got your answer.
And as you saw...
There is a surplus right now in shelter support in housing. Would you support using that to fulfil the requirements and the recommendations that are in this report?
We have to fix...
Will you use that?
We have to fix...
Will you put more money to TCHC?
We have to fix the capital repairs at Toronto Community Housing. I've seen it over and over and over, we have to get that fixed. What that dollar is, I think we have to sit down with Mr. Jones to determine that dollar.
Would you support additional dollars for rent supplement and support...
Councillor Vaughn, the mayor has answered the question. The mayor has answered the question.
I don't want to use the $100,000 that you guys spent going to Vancouver, but you know what, that would be a good use of money. If you want to take, don't take any more junkets and put all that money towards Toronto Community Housing, I will support that 100%.
Based on that Vancouver trip, there's a recommendation here...
100%, no, but based on any further trips that you take when you're on this council, all that money can go to Toronto Community Housing.
Okay, okay.
I'll support that.
Okay, that's it for the questions, we're off-topic, we're off-topic. Okay, Councillor Matlow, question.
Would you stop my time until I'm able to ask the questions?
Yes, I just started it.
I know, but I just, he's otherwise engaged.
Okay. Hello, Sonny.
Stop his time.
Please.
Sorry, yep.
Okay, Councillor Matlow.
Thank you. I just, my first question, just to truly set the tone, is, did you hear my comments yesterday when I said, "I'm not interested in, you know, whether it's David Miller, or you, or anyone who gets blamed or credit, what I really want to see is leadership from all of us, with you as mayor, on this file." So did you, do you understand that that's where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I was distracted there, yeah.
I appreciate that. So, do you in fact support...
Go ahead. It's not about pointing the finger, it's not a saying, he said, she said, but when councillors here are unfairly attacking Mr. Jones's leadership at Toronto Community Housing, that's problematic, Councillor Matlow, that's a problem, when in one year, this gentleman's done more than some people did in five years.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not standing here...
I'm here to, and Mr. Purvis, and the new board, and the councillors that sit on that board have worked tirelessly to make these changes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councillor Matlow...
I'm just letting you know, so go ahead.
I actually said quite the opposite, I'm not going there. I'm just asking to understand that the questions I'm about to ask are really about how to move forward under your leadership and council's leadership. So first of all, do you support, do you in fact support the recommendations that the Ombudsman has...
I said, I've already answered that question, some of them.
Some of them. Now, Mr. Jones has said that he accepts all of them.
Okay, great, then if he accepts all of them, then he's in charge of Toronto Community Housing, no problem, I don't have a problem with that.
Would you agree with me that there are oftentimes that, you know, whether it be the city manager, or Mr. Jones, or anyone else, who, they say that they accept recommendations of the Ombudsman or other accountability officers, but then we don't often have a mechanism to know whether or not they've indeed been implemented.
Couldn't agree with him more, it happens a lot of times.
And frankly, often when we move motions, we ask, you know, for things to be done, and we don't always know unless there's a mechanism put into the motion to have a follow-up that it has been done.
Fair enough.
So I'm just asking, do you, would you support, in my motion, for example, I hope you take a moment to review it, that there's simply a mechanism to know that what is, what has said that will be done, will be done, and then we can follow up. So in other words, there's going to be a report back by, through the city manager, from TCHC to the council, on the implementation of the recommendations, that we'd also want to hear back from the Ombudsman if in fact she agrees that things have been done the way she was hoping they would be done, and there's a component in the motion that when there are seniors 59 and over that are facing eviction due to arrears, that the Ombudsman be notified about that so that she can include into the report if in fact the changes have been made. What I hope to see done is that in March, we're able to say, "This is great, we actually, the things that were said to be done have been done," and then we can indeed say that we can move forward.
I just want to clarify what you're asking, so why not just say anybody? Why are we concentrating on seniors? If the Ombudsman's going to be in charge now of Toronto Community Housing and evictions, everybody should be going to the Ombudsman. I don't agree with that, Mr. Jones is responsible for Toronto Community Housing, I didn't see Fiona Crean as in charge of Toronto Community Housing. I can't support having Ms. Crean do Mr. Jones's job.
Oh, that's not what I'm suggesting.
I think that's what he said, anytime there's an eviction, I think it should go to the CEO, and he'll deal with it. I just want to remind you of these numbers. I want to remind you of these numbers, under his leadership, fewer seniors, fewer people than any other year going back to 2007 have been evicted.
You know what?
End of story.
Let me, sir, sir.
I'll tell you, Councillor Carroll...
Councillor Carroll, stop interrupting.
No, no, you know what, I'll give you the numbers, I'll give you the numbers. I read them out already, I'll read them again.
You don't interrupt.
Okay, 2007, 323 people were evicted. 2008, 514 people were evicted. Hold on, you're calling, you got...
I hear you, I hear you.
2009, 427 people were evicted.
Mayor Ford, hold on, hold on, hold on. Councillor Carroll had no right, she was rude to ask you a question and interrupt Councillor Matlow. So the question is being asked from Councillor Matlow, not by Councillor Carroll, and you know better than that, Councillor Carroll.
No, no, I want to finish this off.
No, no.
I want to finish this off. Under his leadership, under his leadership, the lowest number ever, 198 people.
Yeah.
Obviously, he has fixed the problem. Is it perfect? No. Some people are going to slip through the cracks, but when you go from 514 to 198, that's a huge, huge improvement. You go from 32 seniors in 2008, down to six, down to six.
Mr. Mayor...
Under his leadership.
Mr. Mayor, I'm simply, I'm simply asking, you have said that you don't want anyone to fall through the cracks, I'm not getting into a debate about leadership, I'm just saying...
Sorry, Councillor Matlow, that's your time. Sorry. Councillor, I apologize that Councillor Carroll interrupted you in the middle of your question. Councillor Cho.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, through your, Mr. Mayor. You know, you said earlier in your speech, Mr. Mayor, that you kicked out all the board members, the board of directors of TCHC, because they approved all the waste, and then we formed a new board member, and I wasn't board member previously, then why did you kick me out? I didn't approve any waste.
I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why, Councillor Cho, I'll tell you why. When you're on the board, and you see expenses go through, like these expenses again, you're part of approving this, $100,000 for two Christmas parties?
I didn't approve that.
Hold on, hold on, if you're on the board, if you're on the board, you must have seen this.
That's the problem with our mayor, you don't know what you're talking about.
You must have seen this, councillor, councillor, listen, you must, you asked me why you got kicked off. You voted not to replace the board after these outrageous expenses, going out to restaurants and manicures and pedicures and Christmas parties, and you're saying approve it after the auditor said, "This is killing the tenants."
It's not true.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars getting squandered.
I didn't approve even a penny of waste, okay? I was a new member, and I was sitting on the member only, on the board only two, three months, you kicked me out.
Councillor, you either didn't approve it, or you completely ignored it, so it's one or the other. So obviously, you're on the board, you must have missed these expenses.
Okay, Councillor Cho, your next question, please.
Next question, okay. You say your heart goes out to every tenant in TCHC if you care so much, which recommendation you will support? You say some recommendations you're not going to support.
You know what, I'm not, I'm not...
How many recommendations our Ombudsman made? I'd like to hear from you.
He made numerous, probably close to 100, and if Eugene Jones accepts it, I don't have a problem with it.
No, 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 not 100, our Ombudsman made specifically 30 recommendations.
Councillor, I've talked about this with Mr. Jones, he's agreed to it, fine. As you know, there's been other reports from the Ombudsman, I can't agree with all of it, generally speaking, but some of the stuff, I think you've even questioned, as a matter of fact, I know you have. So all I'm saying is, I'm not going to sit here and blindly say, "I approve everything in there," when some questions have to be answered.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask you directly, did you ever actually read all the recommendations made by the Ombudsman?
Absolutely, I've been briefed on it, absolutely.
And how many are there?
I just told you this, there's must be, how do you tend to call a recommendation? 30, 50, 100?
No.
50 or 100?
You obviously didn't read...
For all the, for all the recommendations? One recommendation doesn't have...
I'd like to hear, he's the mayor.
Okay, that's it, we're not questioning at this point. Councillor Carroll, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank the mayor for his comments. There's no question that the Auditor General's report is very, very serious business, but to today's report, to the thing we're dealing with today, I'm wondering if in your read of the report, you could talk to us about situations of collecting rent from people who don't live in TCHC.
Well, I guess it's a bit of a challenge. If someone doesn't pay rent...
Well, what if they don't live there?
No, no, just ask me about paying rent, I mean, let me, if someone doesn't pay rent, the first thing I think you have to do, which they do, is send a notice.
But when they're not there anymore...
Just hear me out, please.
I'm asking about Mr. C.
No, 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 I'm talking, you asked me about paying rent.
Councillor Carroll, allow the mayor to answer the question.
I'm asking about paying rent if you don't live there.
Councillor Carroll...
I'm asking about a very specific part of the report, and I want an answer about that specific...
I'm not talking A, B's, and C's, I'm talking, if someone doesn't pay their rent...
Mayor Ford...
Well, give me their name.
That's it, that's it.
No, there's no Mr. C, I don't go by Mr. C. That's fine. If you, if someone doesn't pay rent, if someone doesn't pay rent, you send them a notice. You send them another notice. Oh, hold on, just hear me out, hear me out, please.
So Councillor Davis, you're up next. Councillor Davis, questions?
Thank you, Speaker. Mr. Mayor, so are you disputing the facts in this report?
No, councillor, you know what, I know one thing, is when I inherited this mess...
Just yesterday?
No, 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 you're going to ask me a question, I'm going to answer it.
The facts?
It's not going to be the answer you may like, but I'm going to answer it, okay? All I know is that I inherited a mess at Toronto Community Housing. I know, I've seen thousands of units. I know I have been to more units at Toronto Community Housing than any person in this council chamber.
Speaker.
Okay, just hear me out.
Councillor Davis, allow me to answer the question.
You invite, I'll go anywhere.
Okay.
Okay, hold on.
So...
I want to know, okay, you voted, I just want to get the record on, I just want to get this, I might have to repeat it a few times.
Mr. Mayor...
When we said, after the auditor came out with that scathing report on those expenses...
Mr. Mayor, I have questions...
Hold on.
Speaker, I have questions about...
Councillor Carroll, Councillor Cho, Councillor Davis, Councillor DeBairmaker, Councillor Dusset, Councillor Fillon...
Mayor Ford, you can answer the question.
I'm answering it.
I have questions about the report, Speaker.
Councillor Fletcher, Fragadakis...
I have questions about the report.
Leighton, Councillor McConnell, Councillor Mahavik, Councillor Perks, Councillor Vaughn, and Councillor Wong-Tam.
My questions are about the report before us.
Hold on, can you hear me out?
I would like the mayor to answer the question.
All objected to removing the board when the auditor came in and said this is...
About a report that is before us?
It's a scathing report, and you support that.
I am asking questions about the report before us.
You support the misappropriation of funds when you know these people are doing it right in front of you.
Mayor Ford, the question was asked, do you support the Ombudsman's...
That is absolutely wrong.
On a point of privilege, the mayor has just impugned my reputation by saying I supported the misappropriation of funds.
When you know the board...
And I would like him to withdraw that remark.
When you support, when you support...
Speaker, on a point of privilege, you must rule.
It's on the record here, you voted, you voted to support these lavish expenses.
Thank you.
You did, you most definitely did. I know the truth hurts, Janet Davis, but it's true.
Speaker.
And you too, you're the same one.
I put your time...
You supported too, yeah, you did, yeah, you did.
I'm on hold.
Yes, you did.
I put the, stop the timer.
You supported...
Mayor Ford, please.
Wait.
I put the, yes, I know.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, hold on.
Madam Speaker.
Mayor Ford, please, hold on.
I want to bring to light what I inherited...
Speaker, I would like you to rule on my point of personal privilege, he has impugned my reputation, he has accused me of supporting misappropriation of funds, and I would like that remark withdrawn. Mayor Ford, please.
Okay, well, what I wanted to say, I'm going to repeat what I said.
Mayor Ford.
You knew those board members.
Mayor, I did, I stopped the time, I put the, that time on stop. Councillor Vaughn, please.
You supported too, you supported too, you supported too, you said, "Keep them in there, keep them in there, keep the money being spent." You did, you did.
Put the time on hold.
Sure you did.
But you did allow Councillor... I put the time on hold. I have, just hold on, hold on. Mayor Ford, Mayor Ford, okay, hold on. I'm going to have to ask you to apologize to Councillor Davis for the comment, to withdraw that comment you made to Councillor Davis.
The mayor has withdrawn his comment, yes. Okay, so Councillor Davis, I'm going to start your time again, continue asking your question.
His microphone was not on, and I would like it publicly stated, clearly, that he withdraws the remarks he made about me.
I've already done it, I've already done it.
Okay, Mayor Ford...
I've already done it.
Hey, Councillor Davis, hold on.
I've already done it, you've heard it, I've done it, I'm not going to keep going on. I want to get to the bottom. You want to sit here and stick up for supporting these board members that went out and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars when we couldn't even fix people's...
Hey, Councillor Davis, your time is on hold.
...wounds in their unit.
Your time is on hold, your time is... Speaker, if I might ask again... Yes, Councillor Davis, just hold on, I hear you. Thank you. I hear you, just sit down, just hold on. When you made that comment, your mic was not on, so can you please repeat that?
I did already, withdraw it, okay.
Thank you. Councillor Davis, you can continue. Thank you very much. Councillor Davis, you can continue. Point of order, Councillor Fillon, just a sec.
Councillors, if you could please apologize to the rest...
I've done it already, I said I withdraw it.
To the rest of us as well, thank you.
So Mayor Ford, you'll withdraw the comments while members of council...
I've done it, I've said it already, 100 million times, 100 million times.
Thank you, Councillor Davis.
Now, I want to get back, don't try to get off why you never supported me in getting rid of these board members.
Speaker, you asked...
Let's answer those questions.
You asked questions. Councillor, Mayor Ford, please allow Councillor Davis to continue asking her question. Councillor Davis.
Councillor Davis.
There were seventy-five evictions of seniors in 2011, or in total, between 2011 and 2012, twenty-five in 2011 and fifty in 2012. Those were the facts that were provided to the ombudsman's staff, they were provided with files, they reviewed each file separately. Are you disputing the facts that the ombudsman provided to us that were provided to her and her staff by TCHC?
What I'm saying, and I'm going to repeat it, in 2007, three hundred and...
And the answer is yes.
Three...
You don't agree with the facts.
Two thousand and seven, three hundred and twenty-three people were evicted, compared to when Mr. Jones took over, a hundred and ninety-eight, no, I've got the facts here, these are the facts, okay?
Okay, so you don't agree with the ombudsman.
Two thousand and eight, hold on, under your friend's administration, who are supposed to care about the people at Toronto Community Housing, which is a bunch of baloney, five hundred and fourteen people were evicted.
Okay.
So it's been cut in half, it's cut in half.
Councillor Vaughan, please. There was also recommendation in here of the thirty recommendations, not fifty to a hundred.
No, please, thirty, fifty.
In which, in which it asks for more...
What recommendations are you talking about, the ombudsman's report, you have hundreds of recommendations.
Social services and mental health supports to be provided to the tenants.
Forget it, you don't...
Do you support that we should be providing more services and support services to tenants that we fund particularly through our grants program and through other funding?
Nobody supports Toronto Community Housing more than I do.
Okay, okay. That's enough, that's enough, you're finished councillor Davis? Councillor McConnell, questions? Councillor Davis, you weren't asking questions, councillor McConnell.
Thank you, thank you madam speaker, and Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that we're focusing on what's important, which is really the ombudsman's report and the death of a senior and a number of seniors that were in real trouble, and I want to make sure that we're not getting personal, okay? And I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be personal. I do however, and I want you to listen to this carefully, sorry, that wasn't to me. Okay, Mr. Mayor, over here, when you put out the numbers for the evictions, Rob, what are you doing?
Kissing Adam Vaughan.
Oh, okay.
Adam Vaughan's blowing me kisses.
Madam Speaker, could we start again, please?
Oh, I don't know, I...
Madam Speaker.
Okay, just one sec councillor McConnell, let me put your...
Sorry, I don't know.
Please.
Just ask the questions.
I'm going to ask you to please move, please leave your seat, okay? No, I know, but it, you know what, it goes both ways, you know, you know what, there are some members of council that don't like to be criticized and called, but then, then they do the same thing to other members of council, so please, if you want to respect each other, respect each other, and councillor Vaughan, you're very childish, very childish, it's ridiculous.
Speaker.
Okay councillor McConnell, you can continue.
Start my time again, madam speaker, I haven't asked one question yet. Can you please?
Well, that's because councillor Vaughan...
Okay, no, just a sec, just a sec, hold on, councillor Fletcher, I cannot, if you had me, for standing here talking to me. Councillor McConnell, question.
So, Mr. Mayor, could you agree to the following, that when you're looking at those numbers of evictions in the previous administration, would you please make sure that you take out the evictions that were necessary for the Regent Park and Alexander Park numbers in order to move people into the next, into the next piece?
They weren't part of these numbers.
Yeah, they are actually, so...
No, they're actually not councillor McConnell.
Then you will check and make sure, that's all my question was.
When I took over this, it was a complete mess, it really bothers me that you voted against removing these board members, that you know the auditor said, they went out and spent money...
You're doing it again, you're doing it again.
That was hurting tenants, that was hurting tenants.
You're doing it again, I asked you not to be personal.
I can sleep like a baby at night because you know what, I know I've helped out thousands of people in Toronto Community Housing.
My second question, madam speaker, he's not answering, my second question is, in item two, four hundred and fifty, a member of TCHC staff said that we don't have enough time to do the follow-up on the annual review. Would you agree that time needs to be given to our staff to be able to make sure that we don't let people not give their annual review and therefore be bumped up to market rent? Would you agree that that's important?
That's up to the CEO of Toronto Community Housing, I'm not going to go in and tell Mr. Jones how to run Toronto Community Housing, just like you would want Mr. Jones to come and tell you how to take care of your constituents.
Thank you, actually, Mr. Jones and I work together on those things. Four eighty-seven, four eighty-seven says that we have a problem, a problem you may or may not be aware of, which is people go off disabilities and then they go on to old age pension. When they are on disabilities, they pay a hundred and seventy-six dollars a month, when they go on to old age pension, which is not that much more, they pay almost four hundred dollars a month. Those people, those very vulnerable people, which is what the ombudsman is saying, what Mr. Jones is agreeing, need to have that transition over that period of time, in other words, they need their hand held through that process. Do you agree with that recommendation?
You know, I'm not, I'm not in charge of Toronto Community Housing, we hired, and we hired a gentleman to answer those exact questions, what he feels is appropriate, I support, he has a proven track record of success.
That's fine.
He's done a fantastic job in the last year, just hear me out, please.
Number nine, three nine three.
It's a long time, so it took you a minute to ask that question, allow him to answer.
He was showing the efficiencies that we expected of him, he came in to the procurement has been, no, come on, please let me answer the question, please.
The mayor can answer the question any way he wants to because that's the way you asked it.